Really, the only little kind of quirkiness of the trip was doing Liberty Island and Ellis Island on the same exact day. It was just a little bit too much for the kids. They ended up taking a ferry out, then one of the ferries was delayed, and they didn't just have enough time. So they just felt if we just dedicated time at one of those places, the kids would get a lot more out of the trip. Because obviously, the trip is a lot of hustle and bustle anyways. But overall, a really big success, knowing that the civics curriculum, you know, the MCAS test is going to be released here, and they're going to have to take it. I think it's a nice kind of segue going into that trip, coming back from that trip, having to take it before June 7th. So that's another thing that's on our radar, that really aligns really nicely with this trip. And I think there's going to be a little more added value to that trip, knowing that they're going to be able to get some out of the, you know, the documents that they're reading, and the museums that they'll be visiting, and the overall trip experience. So, that's it. Any questions?
I'm just checking on the dates. The day-by-day itinerary has Tuesday, May 23rd, but the 23rd is a Thursday. Is this a Thursday, Friday, Saturday trip?
So it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday trip? Those dates might be from the last, like, last year's trip.
So it's like the 21st, 22nd, 23rd?
Correct. Yeah, so Monday would be that bag drop off for families, leave Tuesday morning, get back Thursday night.
Okay.
Yep, and head into that Memorial Day weekend.
Any other questions? Ms. Walker?
Uh, yeah, just, you might have to mention this. You're using the same program, the Global Citizen Program?
Correct. Yep, yep. Yeah, Jeff Rahilly's a local gentleman. He's been great to work with, you know, even just some feedback we got from him, and he's been very receptive to our feedback on just trying to how to make this trip more enjoyable for students.
Great. Are there any other questions, or are we ready for a motion?
Move to accept the trip as proposed by the middle school.
Second.
Discussion.
Can I just amend that motion to reference the policy J.J.H. Would you be acceptable, is that acceptable to you? It's the policy we...
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Can I go home now? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Sorry for the delay.
If you could stay in your car and just wait.
He has the tension.
He'll wait you guys up.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I move that we will enter executive session for the purpose of discussing possible contract negotiations and/or legal matters, and we will reconvene in open session.
Second.
And this is a roll call? Yep.
May you read them?
Yes.
Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Ryan Callahan?
Yes.
Steve Cole?
Yes.
Bruce Menon?
Yes.
Deanna Higgins?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Do we have to do anything to come back in session?
I think we have to open it again.
I haven't done it this type of thing before, so...
I think we do.
Do we need a motion, or are we just...
We'll come back into our legislative meeting.
Yeah.
In favor?
Aye.
We are back in session.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Menon. You can lead us in here, okay?
Yes. Now that the superintendent has finished his first three-year contract, we are obligated to evaluate the superintendent every other year, every two years. And that evaluation is based on, and the evaluation that we did, and will be available publicly, is based on 25 indicators identified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's a form that we use, and the indicators really cut across a pretty wide range of areas. Main standards are curriculum, curriculum, I have the four, I don't have the four standards. I have the indicators, but I don't have the major categories. Yes.
Curriculum and instruction is first?
Curriculum, instruction, leadership.
Community engagement?
Family engagement.
So anyhow, those are the standards.
Management, second standard.
I brought it. Instructional, leadership. Yeah. So there are 25, broken into 25 indicators. And the indicators are ranked either exemplary, proficient, or needs improvement. The, sort of the bottom line is that DESI wants to see all of the superintendents at the proficient level. Need to be proficient. So when we sat down to do this evaluation, I want to thank Lisa Marie and Sarah for all of their help in creating the form, and tabulating, and with the analysis. The potential, if the school committee ranks any of the indicators as needs improvement, they're required to write a comment. For proficient and exemplary, they don't have to write a comment. So when you figure that there are 25 indicators, there are seven school committee members, there's 175 possible ratings that we give, and potential comments. And I have to say that in all the years I've been doing this, and I've been probably involved in this for 10 years, we don't usually get a tremendous number of comments outside of the ones that are required. This particular school committee wrote 174 comments on 175 indicators. So, and the strength of this, the strength of this evaluation, you know, again, I just want to say that the comments were extremely well-informed. It was really clear that the school committee understood what the superintendent was doing, what it was accomplishing, how it was being measured. The comments are included in the summary. They're not identified by particular individuals, but they are color-coded, so the same individual may have all red, or may have orange, whatever their color is. It is clearly the belief that the superintendent is performing at a proficient to exemplary level. Ninety-seven and a half percent of the evaluation ratings were either proficient or exemplary. Two and a half percent were rated as needs improvement. And in each of those, each of those four areas that there was a needs improvement, it was a single needs improvement, and the majority of the school committee felt that the superintendent was either proficient or exemplary in those categories. So the way that we interpret that is that those are areas that we want the superintendent to look at, but we also feel that this is a very, very strong evaluation. Fifty, I'll give you the numbers. Fifty-seven percent of the responses found him proficient, and 40.5% of the responses found him exemplary. So, you know, I can read the executive summary if you'd like me to do that. I probably should. Let me just do that. Superintendent Sean Gallagher is in his sixth year serving the Newburyport Public School District. This is the fifth formal evaluation he's received from the school committee. He was evaluated annually during the first three years, and then he moved to the biannual evaluation protocol. The format and content have evolved over those previous evaluations. This format aligns with the current DESI standards for superintendent performance, with additional content around implementation of the strategic plan for the district, which is unique to Newburyport. It's not, wasn't part of the DESI document. In total, including an overall, including an overall comment, there were 25 items for committee members to evaluate, a total of 175 possible responses for a fully completed form. Only one single item on an individual evaluation generated no committee member rating, just an NA. And while there were four ratings out of 175 that had mandated comments, the committee offered comments regarding the superintendent's performance on 174 items. And that is an extraordinary response. And I think that speaks to not only to the belief and support the superintendent has in the school committee, but the level of involvement and engagement of the school committee. They truly understood what the task ahead of them was to do. The evaluation reflects the great satisfaction the school committee has with the performance of Superintendent Gallagher. With 97.5% of the responses evaluating the performance of the superintendent to be proficient or exemplary, the evaluation speaks to a strong overall performance by the superintendent across a range of critical standards. Superintendent Gallagher, over the course of his superintendence, he has accomplished all of the items on his original entry plan. That plan reflected several district and school committee aspirations. Some of those aspirations we had for a very long time. From later start times to free universal kindergarten, dual enrollment, to beginning the restoration of our world language program. He's brought innovation to instruction, cultivated teacher leadership, provided high-level professional development, invigorated place-based learning, and promoted teacher and student voice. He's overhauled district technology practices, worked with district staff to create an innovative model for developing a strategic plan. He's aligned the district budget with school improvement goals and the strategic plan. His working relationship with the school committee is a collaborative one. This evaluation is a strong one, predicated on a strong performance by Superintendent Gallagher. As in any evolving cultures, there are a few areas where the superintendent can focus and bring improvement. These are articulated in the body of the evaluation, both in the ratings and the comments. The four areas where a member has encouraged the superintendent to focus his attention on are evaluation, data-informed decision-making, student learning, and continuous learning. They straddle two of the four standards, instructional leadership, and professional culture. It's notable that in case, the NI rating was the only one in that indicator. The overall rating for each of these was proficient and exemplary. Superintendent Gallagher has demonstrated fundamental proficiency in virtually every area expected. He remains open to feedback, and is both a visionary and a strong educational leader. He promotes a strong supportive culture, emphasizes safety for all students, and is accessible by his staff and the greater community. In the overall evaluation, 97.5% of the evaluative ratings given to the superintendent by the committee were proficient and exemplary. The committee finds the superintendent to be performing at a very high level, proficient with many areas that are exemplary. He has a few areas of recommended focus submitted. Bruce Menon. And I'm open to any questions or any other comments anybody else would like to add to the evaluation.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Member Menon, for that summary. I thought it was very thorough and very reflective of what I saw in the comments and evaluations overall. I would just add, and sort of just expand on what you said about the comments. I think I found them, overall, I found, you know, that the willingness to collaborate is reflected in the comments, and the understanding that we as a school committee know that the superintendent is open to input and appreciates our input. And I think that reflects a good, a strong working relationship that is also then reflected in the superintendent's evaluation. And I just, for members of the community who may be watching, I think it's important to remember that, you know, in any situation, in a collaborative and situation like this, you know, we all are looking towards the success of the schools. And so any indicators that we see where we could have work for improvement, it's a shared responsibility, the superintendent and the school committee. And I think, again, I just want to reiterate that any areas I saw that were identified for working on, I think, again, it's to reiterate that it's a collaborative process, and we appreciate that collaborative process that you have set the tone for.
I just want to reiterate that I was impressed and very grateful for the great seriosity with which you took this evaluation. I think you've provided excellent feedback that I think reflects not only your experience of working with Sean, and Sean's work in the district, but also reflects how engaged you are as school committee members with the district, and what we're trying to accomplish. I think it's a strong evaluation, and I think it is one that reflects a strong performance.
I'll just say, and one of the two things I really appreciate about the superintendent, one, he's always available. I don't know how many times we talk. Usually, it's not good things, but we talk quite a bit, and I always appreciate that you always are available. I think if we were to ask you, I think you believe we're moving in the right direction, but I think you'd also spend most of your time telling you how you're going to do even better, and have ideas about how we're going to get there, which is another thing I really appreciate about you. And lastly, I'll just say that I have a lot of people come up to me a lot, and just appreciate that I try to be everywhere, and I feel the same way about you. I think the amount of extra hours you put into the job is really noticeable. And so, you know, again, you haven't wavered on that in your, in your almost six years now that you've been here. Is that right? Six years? So I appreciate that as well. So, I mean, I think the evaluation was great. I want to thank everyone for their comments. I mean, I do think we're moving in the right direction, and I look forward to seeing even where we can go from here. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Can I just take a moment?
Yes, please. Yes, again, bask in it. Go ahead.
Well, I, no, I just truly appreciate, this is, you know, heading into my sixth year, you know, our school committee, our community at large, it's a collaborative effort, you know? Any successful organization, from the top all the way down, really has to have shared values, and I think, you know, a sense of belonging, a sense of collaboration, and we're in this together. So I can't thank the school committee enough for your support, your input, how we can do things better, and then take a moment and celebrate some of our successes that we've had along the way. So it's a wonderful community. Every day I wake up and I come into Newburyport, I'm honored to represent the school system, honored to represent this community, and be part of the school committee. And as Ms. Walker said, continue that collaboration, continue to be veteran, veteran every day. So, thank you all very much, and I would agree with Mr. Menon. This is a very thorough evaluation. I can take a lot of this feedback, you know, and continue to work on, you know, towards improvement, and continue to enhance what we're already doing well. So, can't thank you all enough, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Menon, are you comfortable with me making these motions?
Yes, yes. I would just, as an introduction to that...
Yes.
Usually after the evaluation, we have an opportunity to discuss the superintendent's contract, and whether we want to make any changes to that. And that would be my little introduction to you.
Yes.
We're at that time.
So, I, based on the strength of this evaluation, and in order to keep the superintendent's salary competitive, I move that we increase his salary by 3%, and that would be retroactive to July 1st.
I would second that.
Discussion.
Yeah, that, what I would add is that, that in the superintendent's contract, we have the leeway to go up to 3%. And that's written into the contract, and I am really comfortable, based on this evaluation, based on what I saw at the opening day of school today, with supporting 3%.
Great. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
However...
Yes.
I also think if we have the opportunity to add another year to the superintendent's contract, we would be remiss if we didn't take that opportunity.
Would you like to make that motion?
I move that we add another year to the superintendent's contract, which would carry his contract through to 2027.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would go for three years, but one would be good enough.
Still one at a time.
That's what we've done.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you all very, very much. So grateful. Thank you.
I feel like we should do like a round of applause here.
Hey, folks, it's great reading.
Sure is.
And for, actually, Madam Chair, Mr. Menon, when, will that be posted on the, where is that available?
We just have to figure out where it's going to get posted, but it will be posted.
Okay, so it is publicly available to review, and I encourage folks to look at the detailed comments, because there's a lot of information in there on, you know, the direction, I think, overall, that the committee feels we're headed, and where we've been. So I think it's a very informative tool for folks.
One of the, one of the through lines in the comments that I was really pleased with was how much of what we're doing is really driven and references strategic plan. So I think for, if anybody is unsure about where we are with that, I think the comments really reflect exactly where we are with that.
And just to add to, if people aren't familiar with the process, that we independently contribute those comments, so we're not looking at what other people are saying, or, you know, this is all comments that individual school committee members and evaluations individual school committees do independently of each other, and so I think that's...
Right, until this is posted, the comments aren't shared among the school committee members until we send this out, so...
Great.
That's done.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to move on to school committee goals, which is a follow-up from the brainstorming that we did at our retreat. I think it was the week after, Ms. Walker, that we met, so I want to thank you for helping me take all this information, and we tried to kind of, you know, parse it down. And so if you take a look at what I put in the packet here, we have five categories, and these are the ones that we had listed at the top of those sheets of paper at the retreat. The one that we changed was where it said curriculum, and we changed that to student achievement. We felt that was a little more, more fitting. And then next to each one here, I've tried to come up with just sort of a summary snapshot of what our overarching goal is in that area. So for instance, for communication, it's to improve communication and transparency with all stakeholders. And then for today, what I did was put in a few SMART goals, which are specifically the work of the school committee. So some other things we talked about, like the hiring of a new director of pupil services is, that's, that's, that's not our task. We can oversee that task, but it's not our task. So that's where the SMART goals came from. And in case anyone wasn't familiar with SMART goals, I put a little handout in there to just spell it out for you: specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timed. And so these are three that I, that I came up with, that I felt kind of grew out of our discussions at the retreat. I'm going to start with the policy one, which is completing the policy audit work, and it sounds like we are still on track with that. I see you nodding, Ms. Walker. That still feels like an appropriate goal to get that done by the end of the school year.
Yes.
I just went with June for end of the school year. And then for budget, and actually, the budget SMART goal is, I mean, that's kind of hand-in-hand with communication, but this idea of holding budget workshops, and we are going to move forward with that, where we'll have one, they'll be school-specific, and so the parents from that school will be invited, and we'll have, we'll do sign-ups, so we'll have one or two school committee members at each of these. So we will each attend only one, and so that we can see what's going on. And I think there may also be some survey, were we talking about maybe doing some survey work as well? So, yeah, getting, getting more community input on the budget in the early stages. So that's, that's the SMART goal there. And then for communication, this is something we've talked about on and off, and I'm interested in working, I've already spoken with Lisa Furlong about this, thank you, to do newsletters. Newsletter's kind of a big word. It may be more of a, just a communication, but the idea is that it would go out the Friday, the day after we receive our packet. So we'll already have that link to the agenda and packet, and it will go out to the, to district families. So they'll have a link with information about the meeting. I'll write a little intro, kind of, kind of preview of coming attractions, here's if there's going to be an interesting presentation, something that's coming up at the meeting, just a little thing. And we will also include the recognitions with a photo from the prior meeting, because Ms. Furlong tells me that if there's a photo in there, more people will look at it. And I'm, I'm all for people looking at it. So, so that also gives us a place to do that, so that we'll have the photos that we take at our meetings with a little caption about the recognition that took place. So that, that'll be the content of the, of the communication. We'll start that in October, try to, you know, keep that going through December, and then we'll have a retreat in January where we can kind of evaluate, you know, what kind of feedback we're getting, are we getting more attendance at our meetings, that kind of thing. So anyway, we're not voting on this, but I just wanted to put it out there and get any feedback. You can give me feedback now, or if you want to reach out to me before the next meeting, that's fine as well.
Thank you for distilling.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting all this together. I really appreciate it. The, the only edit that I would make right now is special education. I think that we should change that language to all students versus as many students as possible. I think it's really important that our goal always be to serve all students regardless of, you know, what the outcomes are, or what the ultimate outcome of that is, but that should be our goal.
No, that makes total sense. I guess what I was thinking was in district, like if I had added the words, as many as students, the goal of increasing our programming to keep as many students as possible in district, which is not what it says, so...
That's what, but that makes sense.
So just...
I think that would just be a different goal.
Right.
I think, right, we just have to decide what the language should be, so whether it's increase our programming to keep more students in district versus serve all students.
Which is more concise and makes more sense, I think. What you're saying, all students.
Yeah, I agree with Member Higgins, and with you, Madam Chair. I guess I feel that if you keep that provide programs and staff to meet the needs of all students, and then the, what you were talking about is more of a SMART goal underneath that, that we're talking about retaining as many students in district as possible, because that's related more to the serving, serving the specific...
Right, which is what I was meaning to say.
Yeah. But I think still having the broader goal at the beginning makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
So I think you could split that into a broad goal and a SMART goal.
I'm not sure that would be a SMART goal, though, and that seems also more, more of a district goal, because we had talked about this as far as keeping our goals our, our tasks.
I see what you're saying. It's not as achievable, it's not as measurable.
And that's, right, right, because that's something that we're, we're constantly working to update our programming so that we can increase the number of students we can keep in district. But that, that wouldn't be a SMART goal for the, for the school committee.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, so maybe I'll just make the, make the revision you suggested, Ms. Higgins, so it says to meet the needs of all, of all students.
Yeah, because I think our, I think our special education goal is a little bigger than just keeping them in the district. You know what I mean?
Definitely.
Yeah.
If I, if I make that change, does that read well? Okay.
Are you looking for a SMART goal for the bottom two, or are you...
No. No, not necessarily. It, I'm, yeah, I'm just looking to put in things that do seem like realistic and manageable for this year. That doesn't, you know, preclude having goals in those categories in future years. Anyone else?
I guess one potential SMART goal, we don't need to decide tonight, but for the special education, I guess, related to the hiring of a new director, would be, to me, would be something we want to achieve this year. So, I mean...
I agree, and I actually had that on there.
Yeah.
But then when we talked about that, that seemed more like a district goal.
I see what you're saying.
And something that we would support, but not our own.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
The school crew will be involved in the process. Part of my superintendent report, I'm going to cover where we're at with that process, and what that's going to look like, so...
Great. So, yeah, keeping tabs on that for sure.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, I'll make that revision for, for special education, and then I can include it in the packet next time if we want to have a vote on it. What do you think, Ms. Walker? Have a vote on it?
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Make it official?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I'm all set, unless there were any other thoughts? Great. For subcommittee updates, we'll start with you, Mr. Callahan.
FinCom has not met since our last school committee meeting. We'll meet next Thursday, Phil, correct?
That's two Thursdays.
Two Thursdays, so what day is that?
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first?
Really?
Fourteenth.
We normally meet the Thursday prior to the second meeting, yeah.
Sounds like I never talk about this. So the fourteenth will be meeting, and I'm expecting four fundraiser permission slips to be delivered previous to that to the members of the FinCom Subcommittee Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. So we'll go over those. Ms. Walker has sent along the committee policy GBEVD, which-
Fundraising?
Stuff to do with fundraising and such like that, so we'll go over that a little bit. She won't be able to be there, but I think we can take it on. And that's all I have.
So is that going to be an opportunity for us to look at those policies for potential revisions?
Yeah, there's definitely, our input onto that will definitely go to policy for the policy review, because there's a lot of stuff in those.
Which section is that in?
GBEVD.
Yep. G, section G.
Wasn't that a block job in New York?
So we are, well, part of what we'll be reviewing at our next meeting.
No, we've pulled out some policies that need further discussion. So that was when we all agreed to go to the finance subcommittee. You'll see in your packet when it comes to you that there's a very, our current policy is very brief, and the MASC version is much more comprehensive. So obviously-
Interesting.
Trying to figure out what we want to bring forward, if anything, from the MASC policy would be worth getting your input. You know, just input, so you don't all, I mean, it would be nice if you came to consensus, but if you don't have consensus, it's more just comments, and then the policy subcommittee can consider those when we make our recommendation to the full school committee.
Great. So that's not super time-sensitive, though. We don't have to get it for, onto our next agenda. Okay. All set, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Walker.
Yes, so speaking of policy updates, I was planning to bring forward for first reading all policies that we've revised since we last reviewed. We've, the school committee has reviewed and approved changes to, any changes to sections A, B, and C, and we made it through second reading for those. So the next group is actually D through H, which is quite a long list. Not a lot of heavy content in the revisions, a lot of adjustments, bringing things up to current practice, that kind of stuff. And my hope is to bring those to the full school committee for the second meeting in September for a first read. If it's just too much to take in and people want to, we can always push the first read into two meetings or something, so we can talk about that more. But, so that's where we are. But the policy has reviewed and revised and voted on D through H, and we are currently going to, reviewing the changes to section I, which we'll review at our next meeting on the 11th. Our next meeting with MASC representative is October 30th, and so we'll start reviewing policies J, et cetera. J is a big one. So also K, I think there was a section in there that might be-
KHJ.
KHJ might be, so as we get into those sections and start to, again, see policies that other committees might be interested in reviewing, we'll make sure we share those. So that's where we are.
Great, thank you. So I'm not sure why you're on here again.
Well, let me just say-
Let's say a bit more.
The superintendent evaluation committee has accomplished its task for this year and has submitted its report.
All right, superintendent's report.
All right. So I provided, from my feedback from the retreat, 2022-23 year review, a bulleted list for the school committee. And then we're also part of our newsletter that's going out to parents. There'll be a section on this for all our entire school community. I think this is, you know, from your feedback, I think it's a lot easier to read. It's a bulleted list of all of the great accomplishments last year, and just some of the titles, the comprehensive literacy plan, special ed education co-teaching model, our language and strategies-based programming within the district, student behavioral health, the increase of our student voice and leadership within the district, innovation in teaching and learning, our data-informed instruction, high-impact educational leadership, learning beyond the school day, project, I mean, our, I was thinking PBIS, which is not that, place-based education, enhance our communication throughout reimagining organization and operations. So as part of the bulleted list, those are the headlines, and then we just worked with our principals during extended leadership and really developed this final comprehensive list of all the things that we worked on last year. And we plan on sharing this with the public in our next newsletter, so a lot of great things to be proud of. Any questions on that? Is that, I know last time we were looking at the paragraphs, those, yes.
One question. So these are specifically tied to the strategic plan.
Correct.
So I would suggest that it should say that somewhere on here, the strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's up top, but I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, just, I know, yeah, just somewhere.
Yeah.
Just prominently displayed.
Awesome. Just a brief hiring update. So at our last meeting, we were fully hired, but as things happen over the past couple of weeks, we had a couple more vacancies where some people moved on. So we're looking for the board-certified behavioral analysis, so the BCBA, one at the Mullen and one at the Brezner Hand. So we're in the process of that hiring process. One teacher at the IDC program in the Mullen, which is the Individual Development Center. This is all tied to the special education programming. So we're in the process of hiring those positions at this time, and then a few IA positions throughout the district for support are still open. So overall, we're in a good place once we hire those teachers and BCBA's. The next piece is, I think, really important to us, is the Director of Pupil Services, I think, for the district. So really taking a step back, I think for all of us, you know, for, I think we did a little research, I think we've had nine to 12 pupil services over the past 20 years. So I really believe it's important for us to do a comprehensive search. So we had Nestdeck in, and as you're familiar, Nestdeck does a lot of the executive searches, superintendents, business managers, special ed directors, director of pupil services, assistant superintendents. So we had a nice conversation with them last week, and really going to continue to work with them. They offer assistance for comprehensive searches, guided searches. They have networking and advertising beyond just the school spring scope. So we're going to work with them. We'll also set up, you know, focus groups for the community, candidate profile, things of that nature. So even before we advertise, the people that are interested in that position in Newburyport will have a full understanding of what the community wants. So we're in that process right now of working with them. And then once we have that solidified, then we'll be doing focus group surveys and really reaching out to get this position, I think, you know, solidified for the future, for the next, you know, upcoming years. So that's where we're at right there. So at our next school committee meeting, I think I'll have a, hopefully, a more of a comprehensive plan and what that's going to look like in the upcoming weeks. And Nestdeck did a great job of hiring the superintendent here in Newburyport.
I seem to recall. I thought it sounded familiar.
Can I just ask a question about that? Did we sign a contract with Nestdeck to do the search?
Not yet. We're working, so as part of that, it's working with them and seeing, you know, from their comprehensive search to their guided search, different aspects of what we're looking for them to do. Some of the aspects that we can do on our own, but like the focus groups, having a consultant working with us throughout that process so we can get the top candidate. So that's something that we're interested in, having an outside consultant work with the community in developing those candidate profiles. So right now, we're in the process, taking a look at that and look at our options. So I think it's, I think it's time for that, you know. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I, just another, as we're heading into the school year, just a school choice summary that's also in your packet. So our school choice, we had 61 applicants throughout the process from the spring to now. We had 17 applicants withdraw, and our total enrollment for school choice this year is 44 new students coming into the district. As part of this report, I also added our international exchange students, which I think is a great program at the high school, where we're bringing a lot of diversity in from other countries. So right now, we have 10 students accepted in the international exchange. We have one student from Norway, three from Italy, two from Germany, three from Brazil, and one from Spain that will be with us throughout the school year. So we're excited about that.
Question?
The number of applications that are withdrawn on a year-to-year basis, is that kind of what it looks like? A third of the applications, a little bit less?
It all depends, but yeah, so typically, we'll receive an application, the student will be enrolled, and then over the summertime, you know, decisions from the families, they'll withdraw their application throughout, so. Yes.
Ms. Walker?
What grades are the exchange students typically in? I assume they're in high school.
Usually seniors.
Seniors.
Yeah, seniors and juniors. Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Do you mind if I go back to special ed for one second, or do you want me to wait till the end?
Um, no, go ahead.
Just a request for, you know, maybe an upcoming meeting. Can we get more, or additional updates on the hiring process just as you go through?
Yes.
I think it would be great to get focus groups with some of the special ed parents. I think you talked about that.
Yep, see back.
What are they looking for? And if we could all get an update on just, you know, what are some of the overall trends that we're hearing from parents and what they're looking for? And then one other thing, just to add to that special ed presentation, if that could come this fall, is that I have heard from some families, we've heard a lot about the language and strategy-based program that is coming. Not all families really understand what that is.
Okay.
So if we could try to do another presentation on that in the fall, especially if we're going to start sending packets out to families, just to give another overview of exactly-
Highlight that.
Yeah, exactly what that program is, or what the profile of students that fits that. How do you, how do you know? How are teachers trained in, you know, what they're doing for families? And then the last piece is inclusion. How are students included?
Mm-hmm.
Which special, students with disabilities are included in the general education classroom for, you know, what percentage of them? How are we, like, fostering that? And I know we do have a co-teaching model, but just making sure that, you know, families with students with disabilities get a really comprehensive view of our services.
Yep, 100%. We can do that in a future meeting. And then as part of the process, typically, you know, with Nestdeck and with, you know, these type of positions, we'll have school committee representatives on the hiring process. So from that view, it's usually one to two school committee members as part of the hiring board, too. But yes, that would be great. All right. Any other questions? My last piece, I just, we had opening day today. Mayor Redden gave a nice welcome to the staff this morning, opened up, kick off the ceremonies, and also had an opportunity to thank Bruce Menon, recognizing Mr. Menon for 22 years as public servant and on the school committee, and Mr. Steve Cole for 19 years on the school committee. Wonderful, and they also got a standing ovation by the entire district, so.
Wow.
Really, really nice. It was really nice.
Very touching.
Yeah.
I thought it was more like a seventh inning stretch. Very nice.
Feels like a ninth inning stretch.
A very extra inning stretch.
Yes. Yeah, and it was just, it was just a great day to kick off the opening of school. Vice Chair Hall also was there and stayed for Rick Warmley's keynote, and I think many of our school committee members were impressed. And, you know, Mr. Warmley's a dynamic, upbeat teacher, and, you know, we've already provided a lot of his information for school committee and for the public by a national speaker regarding standards-based education. He brought, I think, a lot of energy to the day, and when I was out and about and talking to teachers, they loved opening day. They said he was one of the best speakers they've ever heard. And then, as always for me, it's not just, you know, have a keynote speaker and then that's it. Mr. Warmley really loved Newburyport, loves kind of what we're doing, looked at our strategic plan, and would like to assist us with a lot of our initiatives, too. So we're going to be working with him throughout the school year in some capacity, so we're really excited about that. Also, it's, we had students involved in opening day, which was really nice. We had Steve Cohen in the NHS band playing out front. And then we also had our student athletes from the high school got up early before their practice to root the staff on as they were coming into the school. And then we had two individual string performers that were fabulous, and those were Sam Parr and Sarah Ann Hajar playing the strings with Miss Shepherd. So it was just a great day. As I said today, the staff went back to their buildings, did some, I guess, housekeeping items tomorrow. They have a day in the buildings, professional development. And what we really like about this second day, it gives the teachers an opportunity to meet in teams and then also really look at their class lists and understand if there's, you know, 504s, IEPs, and really just have everybody on the same page as we welcome the students back on Thursday. So wonderful day, and yes, I'll be riding the bus on Thursday. So the parents that are listening, don't be afraid if I come off a bus and, you know, scare the little ones. I try not to. But of course, it's going to be 98 degrees, as always. So there we go. But no, I just love the beginning of the school year. It's a lot of enthusiasm. We continue to enhance the stuff that we're doing well, and it gives us a kind of a reset on some things that we need to work on, and the enthusiasm was contagious today. So that's it. We're ready to go.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any new business?
I just had a question. Did we, are we going to need to vote on the Woodya tech rep at some point?
I was wondering about that as well.
When we have applicants.
Okay, we don't. I thought we had.
We do, okay.
I saw one.
Yeah.
But what's the process? Do we advertise that, or?
The district has.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah. We've already advertised Woodya rep. So I think we had, was it one applicant?
So far.
So far.
And what's the timing on that? Do you know?
I think at some point, we have to call it and say, you know, applications need to be in by a certain date, and then-
Have we said that?
I don't think we have said that.
Okay.
I don't think we have, right? Deadline for the, when we posted it, I don't think we put a deadline.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. I'll touch base with the Woodya superintendent tomorrow.
Okay.
And let her know.
So at the very least, maybe we can have an update on where we're at with this at the next meeting?
Yeah, just understanding our timeframe.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I was, I was going to mention that as well. Anything else for new business? Yeah, Mr. Callahan?
Do you want to go over the dual enrollment information?
Oh, I forgot about that. I'm sorry. I must have skipped over that. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
That was Joanne.
Oh.
Thank you, Joanne.
At the retreat, we were talking about dual enrollment, and so every year since COVID, we started dual enrollment right before, but since we've come back the past couple of years, so- of years. So we had 110 high school students participated, grades nine through 12, and the colleges that we're working with at this time is North, Northern Essex Community College, Middlesex Community College, Salem State, Endicott, Southern New Hampshire University, and Nichols College. Transferable credit was granted to seniors once they graduate, so we had 25 seniors graduate with transferable credit, predominantly from Northern Essex Community College. And then this year, we had one senior receive the associate's degree from Northern Essex Community College, along with a high school diploma. So as we said, many of our students are getting dual enrollment credits, and by the time they're seniors, they, those will be transferable credits into college. So that's a program that we're growing, and working with other local colleges to continue and enhance that. Thank you, Mr. Callahan, and Ms. Yell.
Any other new business? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
All right, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.